...number 11, this is consideration of adoption of bill number 459, case number DCA-12-003, LED community event signs as ordinance number 459 by amending Title IX Unified Development Code, Chapter 10, signs in a way that permits the city to erect light emitting diode LED community event signs. Obviously not Mr. Seacrest. Mr. Willis?
General Willis, City Mesquite. Good evening Mayor, City Council members. For some time now, the city's been discussing the idea of building a community event sign to promote community activities for the citizens and also those that are traveling through the community. This desire has also been carried through, through the business community, through the Chamber of Commerce. Unfortunately, the Mesquite municipal code provides regulations that make it very difficult for this sign, this type of sign to be erected. This proposed ordinance is being brought forward by staff at the request of administration, and it would allow for this type of sign to be built in the community. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time.
Good evening Mayor, City Council, staff. My name is Sandra Raymaker, and I am the President-elect and Chair of the Government Affairs Committee for the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce would like you to know that their board is in full support of this ordinance that will allow community event signs. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for questions. Any questions, Councilman? Councilman Gus Davison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wondered if we might get, I might sound off. I wonder if we might get a gentleman from Young to come up and just talk a little bit about how unintrusive these are, because I know we've had a lot of discussion in the past on this, there's been a lot of negative public comments, so to avoid that, maybe if you'd get up and explain, talk a little bit about the, how they can be dimmed and so on, whatever. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council. I'm Ray Draper with Young Electric Sign Company. I was really pleased to see that the city staff recommends this type of communication within the city. It is off-premise advertising, and just to let you know, we have one of these in St. George. I don't know if many of you have been up there by the old airport. The City of St. George loves this sign, and they actually want more, it's just coming up with the funds to do it. They've had a lot of comment on it, you can advertise basically anything, well, you can do what you want, but basically anything that is a nonprofit, city-sponsored event is how St. George does it. So you can't have, you know, any mom and pop advertise on it. These are just for events within the city for the community. That's how we run it. They are LED signs that are toned down at nighttime. In the daytime, say they're up to 100%, bright. At nighttime, they're down to about anywhere from 5% to 15% to give you the idea. They do not glare in your eyes. If they do, they need to be toned down. All of these are made now so that you can tone those down at night, so they're very, very beautiful signs. And I would highly recommend that you approve these, whether you purchase any now or later from me or somebody else, but they're a great asset for the community to be able to advertise your needs within the community. Does that kind of answer? And they're all ran remote, so they could either be ran from your office here, or if you delegate that to the Chamber to do, or whoever, that you don't have to go right out to the site. You can run it all through the Internet.
Quick question, there are some securities on those as well, right? I have read in the paper a couple of LED issues in the Salt Lake area when people are hacking into systems. They actually physically have to do that to get into the sign, I know that, but...
They would. They would have to have the IP address, which is a long number.
Yeah.
And if they access that somehow, it could be possible, but then, you know, if that would ever happen. I personally have never seen that happen. We have a number of them in the St. George area, on-premise and off-premise signs that are ran remotely like that, through the Internet, and I've never heard of that, so it surprises me that Salt Lake had one.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Littman, do you have a question?
Question regarding the powering of these signs. I reviewed a number of them this afternoon on the Internet that are solar-powered. Have you any intentions of doing that? Is it cost-effective or not?
Mr. Willis, that would be probably your...
At this point, we're just amending the code to allow for it. We haven't actually looked at building one at this point, so, you know, when that time comes, I'm sure we'll look at all of our different options, but at this point, it's just allowing it in the code.
Thank you. Yeah, I hope that you do look at the possibility of using solar for these.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Mr. Rapsen? Councilman Rapsen, I'm sorry.
That's right, I'm Mr. Toob. As a point of clarification, that this is not just for community event signs, but this would allow, by code, other businesses to advertise a shopping center or something else using LED displays, correct?
The way the definition reads at this point, that in this proposed, says a sign which carries a message regarding a community event or activity which is of general interest in the community. Community event signs are directed and maintained by the City of Mesquite. And so I guess it's not real specific whether or not they can be commercial in nature. Historically, well, typically, we see more of a community events nonprofit, as Mr. Draper stated.
Okay, so this doesn't allow like a commercial center to, like Walmart Center, to put up a LED billboard or display that says specials?
This, under a community event, under this section, would not.
Okay.
There are other provisions that talk about reader signs, but underneath this particular section, how is proposed and written, would not.
All right. Yeah, that's right. I guess there would be, we've got a couple of them in town, so...
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll seek a motion. Councilman Gus Davison?
You forgetting to push my button. I would move that we approve or adopt bill number 459, case number DCA-12-003, LED community event signs as an ordinance number 459, by amending Title IX Unified Development Code, Chapter 10, signs in a way that permits the city to erect light emitting diode LED community event signs.
Before we have a second on that, Mr. Toon, do you have a comment?
Just a point of clarification on the motion. The staff report has indicated that staff is seeking findings, and if the council would like to hear what kind of findings that staff is looking for, I recommend that Mr. Willis have an opportunity to address that issue.
Yes, I have a finding, I forgot to have that in, so I will amend my motion and put that in, and the finding would be B1.
You have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. That motion carries. Thank you. Councilman Hayford?
May I abstain from item number 12 because I have ownership in a billboard?
Thank you, Councilman. Agenda item 12 is consideration of adoption of bill number 460, case number DCA-12-005, LEDs on non-conforming billboards as ordinance number 460, to allow electronic message centers as a face change under the non-conforming use regulations of Section 9-10-12, non-conforming signs. Mr. Willis?
General Willis, Mesquite. The advocate Young Electric Sign Company has made application on the behalf of Urban Land Nevada, which is Eureka Resort and Hotel Casino. The advocate is requesting to amend Section 91012, which is non-conforming signs. The request is to loosen the restrictions on upgrading non-conforming signs, and specifically the billboards. The request is to allow for electronic message centers or reader signs as a face change on billboards. Any modification of a sign's architecture, lighting, or material is currently prohibited on non-conforming signs. Since billboards off-premise signs are not permitted under the code, that face change would be, would not be permitted. The Eureka owns two billboards located near the 19th hole, Mesquite Suites Apartments. Based on the information provided in the staff report, staff has recommended denial. However, included with the staff report is a draft ordinance, Bill 460. If council finds that this proposed amendment meets the necessary criteria and will benefit the community, staff has, staff believes that the attached ordinance would help mitigate some of those impacts that it would have, and staff is available for any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on this agenda item at this time.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm Ray Draper, once again with Young Electric Sign Company.
And Andre Carrier, Urban Land or Eureka?
We appreciate you taking time to be here today, and like, like the ordinance that you just passed, I know that the city staff sees the dollar value, the advertising value for off-premise advertising, which is what was just passed a minute ago with electronics. Electronic message centers are the new thing for outdoor. Now, things might change in a few years where they're going to be LCD screens or something like that, as technology comes. In the last number of years, the prices have come down considerably on the LEDs, and that is what we're trying to put up on, not all, on some electronic outdoor advertising displays, billboards. The LEDs are very beneficial to the client and to the people on the road. It's very inexpensive for them to change their advertising. Now, right now, if the Eureka wanted to change their vinyls, it's somewhere in the neighborhood at $1,200 to change out a message, and it's going to take a few weeks to do it. If he elects with an electronic sign that is located close to his facility to do a special for four hours or two hours, it's a push of a button. So the technology is there for them to advertise as needed on any special event or any quick turnaround that he needs. So I hope you don't penalize this for the new technology that's out there, you know? Now, a few years ago, we had to go out there and paint those by hand. It used to cost us about $3,000. Now it's down to nothing to make the change, virtually. They're expensive to put in upfront, but over time, it's very, they're very beneficial for the clients. Safety, I know the safety is brought up within the staff. We've got some reports that I can leave here with you, and I know there's others besides these two staff report, or these reports that have been given by two separate colleges back east who have done extensive study, and they have found that they create no accidents at all, no increase, decrease in accidents where these electronic boards have been put. And to go along with that, I've talked to the city attorney in St. George. We have two full-color electronic off-premise billboards in St. George. One's a three-sided billboard in town that is on a very busy intersection, the other one's on the freeway. There have been no cases, none, of any accidents whatsoever around any of those locations.
Mr. Draper, I'm going to have to hold you there at three minutes unless council will allow for that to continue.
Okay.
We're still in the public hearing, and I, we can bring you back to ask questions if that's okay. But that would be fine if you want to come back, we can ask you some questions.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
All right. So any further public comment at this point? We are in the public hearing portion of this.
I live directly across, in fact, my house is almost eye level with this particular billboard sign that they're talking about. Now, I understand the technology, and I think that's great and stuff, but I have a concern if the ordinance doesn't regulate the illumination and the flashing. I like my sleep, and I don't want to see a TV glaring and blinking through my window of my bedroom all night long, and I'm sure there's other neighbors that would be concerned with the same thing. Now, if there's a way, he says LED, they can tone it down, you know, and I don't know what that level would need to be so that it didn't affect all those residential homes that are across the freeway from them, and that's my concern. That's the only thing that I would be raising a little bit of a flag about, and if we can have some kind of control on the illumination and those effects, then I wouldn't be against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tobler. Any further public comment? Mr. Willis? Not yet. Got some public comment. I'm sure we'll call you back up here, trust me. Seeing no public, no further public comment, we'll go ahead and close our public hearing at this time and entertain questions from council to staff or even Mr. Draper at this point. Councilman Gus Davison?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Would you mind returning to the dial for a second? I have just a couple of quick questions. I know one of the, one of the things we've talked about over the last four or five years, we've been talking about this issue, was the amount of rotations you could have, or the, I should say, I guess, the lack time between changing or flashing, and I think there's been a lot of studies done to show that if you keep that number down, and so you don't have constant flashing, you don't run into the issue that I think Mr. Tobler is concerned about, number one. Number two, and that could be obviously put into this, modify this, to make sure that that is actually in this ordinance, and I think that would probably be agreeable with everybody who wants to do one of those signs, because frankly, ones that fly so fast, when I'm reading those going down the road, I just blast right by them because I don't have time, I mean, I'm not going to take my eyes off the road to try to get every message that's coming off there. So I think they're kind of a waste of time anyway. So can you give us a number on that?
I can, and it's in the ordinance as they've kind of basically drafted if you want to approve one. Eight seconds is what the standing time is for NDOT and the federal government. So if it's faster than that, then it's called a motion sign like, you know, the Virgin River has over there, and a Casablanca with full motion. On-premise is different than off-premise. Off-premise billboards have to hold for eight seconds minimum. Now, if the Eureka would like, they could hold it there all day, or they could hold it for an hour or a half hour, but as a general rule, eight seconds is what we would like to see before it changes to a new, a new advertising. And I know it was brought up here about the brightness, and that is also in here too, which has been recommended by OAA, which is Outdoor Advertising Association. And we've got, we've got a meter that we could meter that, and I don't know if the city does, they may. That's in there also. So at nighttime, we, when we put one up in St. George, I was out of town on vacation, they put it up, and our guys didn't tone it down. It's one of those things that you have to tweak out, you know, at first. And man, I had, I had a city councilman call, and they were just really upset, but as soon as I got back, we tweaked it, turned it down, he loves it, and he's kind of like this gentleman that lives a little ways away, no problems now. He's still on the city council today.
Yeah, you know, we've actually had that problem with conventional signs as well, because when the port readership opened up, I think you built that sign if I'm not mistaken.
We did it for...
Yeah, and I know that was turned up pretty bright, and once it got toned down, the complaints went away, so I think that's just a matter of making sure that we got the appropriate amount of light, and that's what you want to do anyway.
Now, I know that it's Dale across the street, he won't screw it up.
That's for sure.
I'm sure that Dale will let you know if it's not wrong.
I think he has a number at home.
So, Mr. Sawyer does.
Do we have that number tonight, or?
Yes, it's in, the ordinance is, they wrote it as if you approved it, it is in there for the eight seconds.
Okay.
The only other thing that I can see that I would like to see if we approve this tonight, which we would like to do, is they put in here 800 foot from a residential area. That is a long ways, and like St. George, and typical that I've seen, is 200 foot from a residential area. I would hope somewhere between your 200 and 800, you could come to some agreement. 800 is a long ways away.
I think Mr. Tobler lives 801 feet.
Well, we should be good.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just add to that, you know, I'm hanging back because I know that this affects more than just two signs that we're contemplating, and really, our use is more because of, that's a gateway entrance for Mesquite and for occupancy communications. It's pretty important to the destination for us to be able to say if there are no rooms, communicate an alternate message to try to get that traffic and stop it from going to Las Vegas. If we have rooms, to make sure we give a compelling offer. So that's our priority.
And I do want to make sure everybody understands, this is not putting up new structures. There's, we can't put up any new structures, we could only put them on existing structures. So I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Draper. Councilman Rapsen, do you have a question or comment?
Just to comment, I think it's on exhibit B, "An electronic message center shall exceed a brightness level of three-foot candles per ambient light," as above ambient light is measured using a foot candle lux meter, blah, blah, blah. So there is some, I don't know what that means, but I do know that several weeks ago, we had driven up to Colorado and broke for St. George, and it was about three or four in the morning, it was still dark, and that sign was not remotely annoying, nor was it distracting in any sense. And I, my personal opinion is, I think these flexes that are starting to fall down, that are worn out, that are frayed or torn, are far more distracting, or far more annoying to me than a really nice, clear LED signal that is readable, and I can see it from a business standpoint how absolutely important that is to change your message as frequently as possible, and change and adapt to the changing conditions. And I'm frankly a little bit perplexed at some of the staff's concerns and some of the comparisons that were used, like Arlington, Virginia has no billboards. We're about as, like Arlington, Virginia is, a cow is to a duck. I mean, they have a population of 190,000 people, 50% of those are government workers, it's a bedroom community of Washington DC. The rest of the people are either lobbyists, lawyers, or accountants, and the balance are workers at the restaurants there. They don't need to even advertise. These guys are taking everybody to lunch. I mean, some of these things were so irrelevant that, and we are a desert, in the middle of the desert, we have billboards, these aren't adding billboards, we've got them. They look crappy, I think, and these will look so much better, so I have no compelling reason why, if we can meter the lights down, ramp the light down, and slow the message change to a reasonable rate, I have no problem with this at all.
Any further questions for staff? I'm going to concur a little bit with Councilman Rapsen on some of the issues that were brought forward with the background information. There are really no safety issues here. National Transportation Highway Board says there's no scientific evidence to prove it. In fact, there's all kinds of scientific evidence to prove that they have absolutely no increases in any accidents. The illumination, we can work with, I don't think that's going to be a problem. The 800 feet issue. Mr. Willis? And while you're coming up, Mr. Toon, if council so desires, they can remove that 800 foot limit tonight, can they not?
Yes, Mayor, they can, they can remove it or amend it. Okay, for number?
Thank you. What's your stand on the 800 foot?
800 foot was, with the research that Mr. Seacrest did, that's kind of the number that he came up with, it made sense when he looked at everything that he looked at. So the council chooses to amend it, it's definitely available. Just to hit a few, hit a few points on the ordinance, with it, with the 800 feet, it would allow for nine of the 21 billboards to be converted. It would only be limited to 200 feet within the I-15 corridor, and it would be a conditional use permit, so if a sign, if the advocate requested a sign to be converted from static to a reader board, those homeowners or those residents within 500 feet, or up to 30, or 30 at least, would be notified, and they would be invited to the public hearing. And so those are just a few of the, few of the recommendations as part of the, as the ordinance.
Okay. Quick question, then, on that 800 foot limit, what happens when you go down to 500 feet? What happens when you go down to 250 feet?
The more you go down, the more, the more billboards will be allowed to be converted from static to reader.
Okay. What are those numbers? At 250 feet, how many billboards? All of them?
We would have to go back and do the math and see what those would be.
Any further questions from staff or from council? Councilman Gus Davison, I see your light on, is that for a motion or is that for a comment, question?
For a motion.
Okay. Councilman Rapsen, did you have a question?
Well, I just have a little concern with the 800 feet as well, I mean, it's, and a couple of issues. I mean, we just arbitrarily excluded certain billboard from the ability to be converted, and that should be, I think, relegated to the business itself, and I assume that this is an expensive conversion, that this is not something that every billboard owner in town is going to just say, hey, especially particularly given the rent would probably go up, which might limit the number of advertisers available. When it's a specific property, they clearly have a plan, which makes it economically more feasible, so I would be comfortable with some far reduced number to 400, 500 feet or something. I mean, 800 feet is two football fields almost, that's a, that's a long way away. Even 300 feet, but I don't see the, I don't see the harm or the impact on lowering that number.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further questions? Seeing none, Councilman Gus Davison, would you wish to forward a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that we adopt bill number 460, case number DCA-12-005, LED, LEDs on non-conforming billboards as ordinance number 460 to allow electronic message... billboards as ordinance number 460 to allow electronic message centers the face change under the non-conforming use regulations, section number 9-10-12, non-conforming signs. And I would ask that we, that we alter the, the distance from 800 feet to 500.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. We'll call for that vote. That motion carries. Thank you very much.